Good evening, everyone. As mayor, I call this electronic communications meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being convened with city council members using the Zoom platform, broadcast over the city's cable channel, and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council at this time to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting. Ms. Simmons?
Mayor Doll?
Here.
Vice Mayor Keir?
Here.
Ms. Oaks?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Who's it?
Dr. Harrington?
Here.
Ms. Mead?
Here.
Dr. Curran?
Here.
I have confirmed that all council members are present.
Thank you. And now I ask that city manager Steve Rosenberg now identify his location and those city officials or colleagues, if any, present with him at that location, and the participation of anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone. Mr. Rosenberg?
Your mic is off, Steve.
Thank you, Dr. Harrington. Mayor Doll, members of council, I'm participating in the meeting from my residence in Stanton. There is no one with me at this location. Also participating in this evening's meeting on the Zoom platform are Faith Simmons, clerk of council, Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, Doug Gwynne, City Attorney, Phil Traer, Chief Finance Officer, Billy Vaughn, Director of Community Development and Economic Development, John Venn, Chief Human Resources Officer. We also have participants representing the school division, including members of the school board, Robert Boyle, Chair, William Lob, Natasha McCurdy, Christine Paulson, and Kenneth Venable. Additionally, the school superintendent, Dr. Garrett Smith, is participating, as is the school's budget director, Brad Wagner. There will also be representatives of various parties who have matters before council this evening, who during the work session will join us. They include Tim Davy with the Timmins Group, Pamela Mason Wagner with the Arcadia Project, Tom Wagner, also with the Arcadia Project, Michael Barnes, a consultant working with the Arcadia Project, Mark LaRosa of Augusta Health, and Mary Manix, also of Augusta Health. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of the electronic communications nature of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. This meeting has also been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page. Access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 p.m. Instructions for public comment can be found on Agenda for the Regular Meeting and on Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by Zoom, giving the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which as part of the total circumstances makes it impracticable or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council Ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.vaa.us/cogord2020-04. Given that we are conducting this meeting by Zoom, with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and broadcast over the cable system as it occurs, I believe it merits reminder of a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I emphasize the request that each speaker speak loudly and slowly and self-identify each and every time when speaking, so that it will be clear who is speaking before your remarks are made. Second, please pause after each speaker to allow a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, all votes will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes. Fifth, I ask that if any member of city council has to leave the meeting for any period of time, to please interject and make an announcement so that the clerk may take note of attendance in the minutes. I ask that you also announce your return, so it also may be reflected in the meeting minutes. Finally, I ask everyone's patience, because without being in the same room, it is likely that a speaker may not realize that another speaker is continuing. Again, we may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We will take whatever time is necessary so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. I will now take questions from council members and participants if you have any questions about the process. Are there any questions?
No.
If not, we will then begin with the invocation, a moment of silence, by Dr. Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I have two quotes to share tonight. The first one is from a man who lives in a small city, not unlike Stanton. A lot of historic architecture, a lot of artistic activity, a lot of restaurants. His name is Pope Francis. Here's what he said. "Tonight, before falling asleep, think about when we will return to the street, when we hug again, when all the shopping together will seem like a party. Let's think about when the coffees will return to the bar, the small talk, both those close to each other. We think about it when it will all be a memory, but normality will seem like an unexpected and beautiful gift. We will love everything that has so far seemed so futile to us. Every second will be precious, swims at the sea, the sun until late, sunsets, toasts, laughter. We will go back to laughing together. Strength and courage." And the second quote, a much shorter quote, is from Julia Ward Howe, who, as you might remember, was very active in the emancipation movement, and then a little bit later on in her career, very active in the women's suffrage movement. And what she said in reference to the women's suffrage movement, but I think it's apt for our situation today. "We acted, one and all, under the powerful stimulus of hope." Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harrington. At this time, we'll move on to item one, which is the consideration of the work session and regular meeting agendas. You've had a chance to review the agendas, and if someone is ready with a motion, I would entertain it at this time.
Mayor Doll?
Ms. Oaks?
That would be...
Oh, Ms. Mead?
Me, right. I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Keir?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks? Ms. Oaks?
Aye, sorry, aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I would offer the opportunity to Mr. Boyle to open the school board meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I'd like to call to order the April 23, 2020 meeting of the Stanton School Board.
Thank you. So item two is the budget work session. Discussion of the fiscal year 2021 school board budget. And so I will turn that over to Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As I noted previously, the members of the school board join with you this evening, and Dr. Smith and Mr. Wagner, I believe, along with some participation by Phil Traer, the CFO for both the city and the schools, will now share with you a presentation about their revised plans for the 2021 budget.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I appreciate that. We actually did have a budget approved on March 9. Then the governor's order to close schools came on Friday, March 13. And so our budget had a shelf life of about four days, which might be the shortest-lived budget in Stanton City Schools' history, I think. So we've had to go back to the drawing board, but I just want to kind of give a little bit of an overview here as we start. Even though the closure was very sudden, and maybe it was a little bit of serendipity, but we were working on some initiatives related to equity. And as it turns out, you know, with this closure, the inequities that exist in our society have been revealed to, you know, to many people in even a greater, you know, sense of it than before. I think a lot of people maybe didn't really sense the inequities that exist in our city and in our country. And so with the closure, fortunately, we are already working on a couple of these things. If I talk about the community feeding, and that was the first thing that happened, we were going right into spring break. Normally, over spring break, we would not feed students and families, but because we had no idea how long the closure was going to go, we did go ahead and do that. But the reason we were prepared for is because we've been doing summer feeding for the past two summers. And so we're used to loading up and delivering meals to neighborhoods, to apartment complexes, and things like that. And we're used to preparing these meals in one site and getting them out. So fortunately, you know, that was not too difficult of a shift for us to go from the pickup mode to the delivery mode. And then, as many of you know, we were preparing to bridge the digital divide in Stanton City Schools. The week following the closure, on that Wednesday and Thursday evening at Shelburne, we were preparing to give free Chromebooks to families and pass out hotspots for them to use for the remainder of the school year. So we were ready to go, and that made a big difference for us, because we feel like right now, we're not getting really any more requests. We think that every family that needs it in Stanton City Schools has a device, a free Chromebook that we've given them, and we think every family that doesn't have internet connectivity now, now does, because they can use those hotspots through our partnership with T-Mobile. So like I said, you know, there are things we were working on, and it turned out to be very fortunate that we were working on these things when the closure hit. So those things lead into our continuity of learning plan. It can work for us, because everyone's involved now. We don't have students left out, because everyone's connected and has devices. Now, as you might imagine, with the continuity of learning plan, it's going very well, spirits are high, but I don't think our 12th graders are participating very much and doing too many assignments. And the hard-to-reach families are still the hard-to-reach families. So our counselors and our other mental health professionals and our special education teachers have really tried to reach out to these families. We know that, you know, they're struggling for a variety of reasons. You know, we have special needs students whose learning needs to be addressed, obviously mental health issues, and our CPS reports are way down, which is concerning to us. So children who usually could find a safe haven at school, and if they're in trouble, find a trusted adult to report problems to, they're not able to do that anymore. So that's concerning to us, and that's why we're trying so hard to reach out to all of these families. One kind of bit of good news is that for students who maybe weren't on pace for graduation, we've really been honing in on them, and we're trying to get everybody across the line before the end of the academic semester. Regarding sports, seniors lost their spring sports seasons. The sports season has been canceled by the Shenandoah District, and it's just a real shame and really almost unimaginable that this has taken place, but it has. With graduation, we've spoken to the senior class. The students feel strongly that they still want to do a live, in-person ceremony, so we're planning to do one later in the summer, maybe later in July or even early August at the football stadium in Gypsy Hill Park. I've been in communication with Chris Tuttle about that, and so we're working on that We always do summer school in June because of our calendar, but since the governor's stay-at-home order extends through June 10, we're going to have to switch to a virtual summer school. There is some good news there, though. We'll be able to serve probably three or four times as many students as we typically could in summer school. And so your summer school funding from the state is based on the number of students served. So we expect that next year, we'll have a lot more money to use for summer school, because we served more students this summer, and we're going to need that extra instructional time. So that's a bit of good news there. Our operations continue. We're disinfecting, we're cutting grass, we're preparing for summer work. And as many of you have seen, if you drive on North Coulter, the high school project is at warp speed right now, and it's given us an opportunity to kind of move forward with demolition earlier than we were planning to, but still on eggshells there, because like everything else, if the curve isn't flattening like we expected to, then there's always a chance that that project could get shut down, which would not be good for any of us financially. And then regarding the start of the 2021 school year, we've been told to be prepared for anything. Be prepared to open in August. Be prepared to open in September. Be prepared to open in August and then close again in September. So we're looking at every possible scenario there. And I just wanted to kind of give a broad overview of where we are before I turn it over to Mr. Wagner for the budget update. Does anyone have any questions about any of that? Okay, then we'll proceed. Thank you. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. There we go. So as everyone can surely imagine, the last six or seven weeks have been challenging with respect to the school's budget. As Dr. Smith pointed out, you know, we got our budget approved by the board on a Monday, and by Friday, it was no good. We were proud of that budget. We thought we had put together a fine plan for the upcoming school year, but we're starting over again. And, you know, what we're doing here on this slide is, the point of this overview is that, you know, information and guidance from the Virginia Department of Education and from the U.S. Department of Education has been understandably slow after the last, over the last several weeks. Takes time for them to figure out what they're dealing with and then, you know, formulate it and get it to us. So this presentation is probably a little bit short on specifics, but I think, you know, the most useful thing I can do at this point is impart to each of you a framework that will help each of us understand and properly organize the information that will and has started to begun trickling in over the next couple of months. So with that being said, the approach we've taken is we want to sort of categorize our information flows into two buckets. The first bucket being, you know, what is the impact on the remainder of our current budget, the fiscal year 20 budget? And then the second part is, you know, what do we know is going to happen to our fiscal 21 budget? And probably one of the most challenging parts is the part of the 20 budget that rolls over and impacts the 21 budget. So there's a couple of levels that we have to deal with there. So looking at the 20 budget, and each of these things that are on this slide, we will delve into more detail as we progress. We will likely see, and we've been told, that we will see reductions in our state funding, particularly sales tax revenue, which is understandable. Conversely, you know, we have a commitment that the city of Stanton will fully fund its appropriation for the schools for fiscal year 20. That second half of that appropriation will come to us in June. So that is very helpful. Another aspect of the fiscal year 20 budget is that, you know, we are generating natural savings due to reduced activity. And we have frozen, you know, hiring for vacant positions. The objective here being, you know, save what we can so we can use it for next year. In that regard, we've also been implementing a essential expenditures-only policy as a way to sort of keep a cap and keep our spending down as low as we can while continuing to provide the services that we can to our students and community. Now, when we switched over to our new budget for fiscal year 21, as I said, the original lasted about four days. The governor's budget amendments, which were actually approved today by the legislature, removes most of the new spending and new initiatives that the governor had proposed and made available, including a 2% pay raise for SOQ positions, expansion of the preschool programs, and additional funding for at-risk programs. With respect to local revenues, we are anticipating a 12% to 14% reduction in the appropriations from the city. In order to sort of address those shortfalls, we will be eliminating the new spending that we had programmed in, including a pay raise for employees. We are suspending hiring for new positions that were included in the budget and various other additions to that budget. And we will also, are in the process of reviewing with all of our managers to make selective cuts in our non-compensation line items in our budget. And again, a lot of this is, we don't have too much detail, and we continue to await guidance from the state and federal agencies. As I said, it's been slow in coming. It is starting to trickle in, and we'll see what we get and how quickly it comes. Now, we're going to dive in first into the FY20 budget issues, and then we'll switch back over to the fiscal year 21 issues. One important factor as we try to model out our budgets is that typically, carryover or unspent funds in one fiscal year are typically deposited into the subsequent year's capital improvement accounts. It's sort of, we take those extra funds and they become, you know, help our rainy day funds and our long-term investment funds. We will realize some savings this year that we'll be able to make use of in our FY21 operating budget. So rather than taking unused funds and putting them into CIP accounts, we're going to look to keep those in our operating budget for the coming fiscal year to make up some of the revenue shortfalls. And the big challenge for us is that the amount of that carryover depends upon two factors. One is how much do we not spend, but it's also dependent upon how much money we actually get. So that's something we're waiting for more clarification and see how it materializes as the school year winds down. Now focusing on the state revenue. Through the 15th of April, we've received approximately 73% of our budgeted sales tax revenue. That leaves us an outstanding yet-to-be-received amount of $973,000. That is our sort of worst-case scenario in terms of what we would lose out of funding for fiscal year 20. And honestly, the actual revenue loss will be a fraction of that $973,000. We have been advised by the state superintendent that those cutbacks in note that state revenue funding will begin to materialize in May as a result of lags in the collection and receipt and dispersment of state sales tax revenues. So in that regard, there will be, you know, transfers. We have, it's a bi-monthly transfer, and so there's three more left in this fiscal year. We've also been advised by the state that other state revenue sources will not impact, at least not impact Stanton City Schools, because other programs that it addresses are not ones that we're participating in. And again, we're continuing to wait for more guidance from the U.S. Department of Education. There was a conference call this afternoon headed by the Secretary of Education regarding the COVID or CARES Act stimulus funding that is going into the educational system, and we'll touch base on that in just a moment. In terms of expenditure savings, as I mentioned, we expect to generate a significant amount of savings because we're not doing things. Think about, we're not in school, we don't, we're not having to bring in contract subs to fill absences of teachers and staff. We're not spending as much as we did on fuel, because we don't have buses going out every day. We don't have activities, extracurricular sports, spring sports activities. We're not paying overtime, because no one's putting in overtime. As I also mentioned, we're only, we're carefully reviewing expenditures, and everybody that has access to spending understands our policy that it must be essential for us to implement the remainder of this school year's activities, as well as make sure that we're ready to go on August 4 for the beginning of the new school year. And at this point, you know, I would love to be able to tell you what that number would be in terms of our carryover, but the formula, I still need to know what I'm getting in. So it remains to be seen. Now switching over to the FY21 budget, this slide is a bit of an overview, and we'll visit each of these items in more detail in subsequent slides. But as I said before, with respect to local revenues, we anticipate a 12% to 14% cut in funding. With respect to the state of Virginia, we anticipate or are estimating a 25% cut in sales tax revenue, and that is an assumption. We are using the same assumptions used in the city's models for their budget preparation, and we are working closely with Mr. Traer and the city finance team to continually update and review those assumptions. As I mentioned before, the elimination of the governor's new expanded education initiatives will eliminate about $350,000 of funding from the state for those projects, and to some degree will also reduce the amount of local match that we would be required to provide. With respect to the federal CARES Act stimulus funding, we have received an estimation from Virginia Department of Education that those funds will be about $674,000. With respect to this general fund appropriation from the city, I'm sure the... uh, with respect to this, uh, general fund appropriation from the city, I'm sure the, uh, the board and the city council are familiar with our revenue sharing formula. Um, in the accounts that relate to, that are shared, um, there's an estimated, uh, $3.4 million revenue reduction according to that traditional formula. And that would cut our appropriation by $1.7 million. Um, the proposed property tax, um, would also, uh, would contribute another approximately $200,000 to our funding. So that's where we come up with our estimation of about a 1.7 to 1 point million dollar, uh, 1.9 million dollar reduction in our funding for the subsequent, uh, fiscal year. Um, and this slide-
Yeah, so the, the purpose of this slide is to kind of show that our cuts are kind of mirroring the cuts from the state. Uh, you know, they've cut the raise, we've cut the raise. They've cut the preschool expansion as much as it pains us to do that. We've cut the preschool expansion. And I want, you know, everyone to know, these are still goals for the school division. Um, and, and they were in there. They were in our four-day-old budget, but, but they're gone now. And I would say suspended makes more sense. We, we're planning to bring these things back. Uh, in our, in our meeting yesterday, uh, we, we've, you know, in the legislative meeting yesterday was the veto session. We got the update this morning. And we were told today that, uh, the calculation tool that we're expecting from the state is we should get it within 10 days. So we're still several days away from having hard numbers. And then like the general summary just came back to work. So to kind of recap, um, the, the raise is gone, the preschool expansion is gone, the new positions are gone. Uh, payroll adjustments and stipends, um, that we were making to, to even things out and to, and to recognize, uh, our coaches who spend extra time with extracurricular activities. And we've added some new ones. Um, those are gone right now. And then we are looking at, can we reduce costs associated with other non-comp expenditures? Like can we reduce travel? Maybe we put a freeze on tuition assistance, a freeze on the student advocate that you see, um, you know, come out in the newsletter once a quarter. Uh, we're reviewing our, our policies for insurance and again, reducing transfers to the CIP. So one of the things, uh, that we expect to happen is a large spike in homeless students. And, uh, and, and so that, that ends up being, that ends up being very expensive because it doesn't matter, uh, where the students live. They could live in Charlottesville. We still have to pick them up, bring them to school and transport them home. So, uh, with a lot of people out of work, with the economy tanking, uh, we, we expect, uh, that this is going to have a significant impact on our families. So when the students do return and when we reopen school, it's going to be like nothing we've ever seen before because the students will have been out of school for at least five consecutive months, if not longer. And that, that's honestly, that's, that's never happened. Um, so a delayed start is possible for the start of the school year. August 4th is supposed to be the first start date. It could, it could look different. It could be kind of a blended start, virtual and some in-person. We're still working on all of those things. And we're, we still don't know exactly what athletics and extracurricular activities will look like yet for next year. So that pretty much brings us to the end. I just wanted, wanted to kind of show you the budget calendar. These are, this is what's upcoming. I won't read it to you. And we wanted to also open the floor to see if anybody had any questions.
So let's go down through the council members' names so we don't step on each other. Vice Mayor Carr, do you have questions?
No questions. I just would like to thank the school board for being prepared more than a lot of people for this in that you were ready to pass out computers to our students so that they would be able to keep up with their classmates. I think that's highly appreciated. So, thank you for that.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Curran.
Thanks. I do have one question towards the end. We talked about homeless students.
Yes.
That it doesn't matter where they live. For example, Charlottesville. How, how does that work exactly?
There, there's the McKinney-Vento Act, uh, which is a law to protect homeless families. So they could, uh, you know, and when they're homeless, um, you know, they can, they can choose what school division. Maybe they had a prior connection to Stanton City Schools. And so with all the other uncertainties in a child's life, they want to at least maintain some stability. So they, so they want the child to still be with the same teachers, the same classmates. Let's give them some sense of normalcy. And so we are obligated by law to serve those families. They can claim where they want to go to school and we have to honor that request.
And is that only within a certain radius or in the whole state of Virginia?
It's, it's really, there's really no boundaries to it.
It could be out of state.
It could even potentially be out of state.
And the school division would have to provide transportation.
Yes. Federal law.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Mead.
No questions.
All right. Thanks. Ms. Oaks.
Yes, um, I do have a couple of questions. Under the, uh, Federal Care Act, um, did I hear a figure of 600 and some odd thousand that's expected to come from the-
Yes. It's about 674,000 is what we've been told to expect. Which is very helpful.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Um, what would happen if the, uh, construction on the high school were have, would have to halt?
Well, you know, it would, it would delay our phasing, uh, timelines and, uh, it would cost more money because it, it would take longer, longer to build. Like I said, the, the students and the staff being out gave us a, a chance to accelerate the project. And we were pretty much faced with a decision of, do you want to, you know, really slow it down and piecemeal it in the event that we get closed down? Or do you want us to go ahead and, and, and go for it and try to get this thing knocked out and done on time? And, yeah, I chose the latter. I, I thought that we should go, we should go ahead and go for it and try to get this school up and ready for students and staff at the, at the start of next school year. So that, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. So to slow the, uh, construction down or to even halt it, uh, in the long run would cost uh, the school system along with the city additional, uh, money?
Yeah, but I, I, yes, that would be my prediction, uh, Andrea. But there's a, you know, maybe there will be some relief there too because we wouldn't be the only ones. And, you know, we're operating under the bond that city council generously approved for us. And it's got strict timelines to it and we're trying to stay within those timelines. But maybe, maybe there will be some, uh, opportunity for a little bit of relief there, but, but we don't know yet. We haven't, we haven't gone that far down the line. But I'm, but I'm concerned, I'm concerned about it getting shut down.
Yeah. Well, um, just trying your best to stay on schedule, like you mentioned with the bonds, along with the construction itself. Um, I was just trying to figure out there, um, were possibly any savings? I've had folks to ask me, could we have, um, stopping the construction at this point? Um, or would it eventually cost us more money in the long run?
Yeah, it won't yield any savings at this point. We have a contract and so, yeah, there won't be. That, I can assure you that we won't get any savings from a shutdown.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Mr. Holmes, do you have any questions?
No questions.
All right. Thanks. Dr. Harrington.
Oh, yeah. Just one question. One of the items you listed is, uh, uh, possible money savings was the elimination of tuition assistance or the reduction of tuition assistance. Could you just say a little bit about what that is and what, what sorts of assistance we, we provide and-
Sure. Sure. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Sorry. I'm sorry to talk over you, but when our staff, uh, wants to take a course um, at the university level, we give, uh, we pay $500, uh, towards that to reduce the cost for our employees. So it's something we're considering. And if we had to do it, my idea would be to just temporarily not be able to do that next year and then try to reinstate it the following year if possible. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. I, I only had one question and, and I know all of this budgeting is a moving target because the state doesn't know what their budget's going to look like. Nobody knows. But, uh, when you were, when you were showing that FY 20 expenditure savings uh, and, and that the bottom line would be determined by what the state ended up, the cuts might be in that revenue. But nevertheless, without considering the, the revenue, what's your projection for just the expenditure savings part of that?
Um, we've been going through this and we, we kind of, every couple of days, we take another look at it. Um, you know, I, I hate to throw out a number and then miss it. Um, and our numbers have ranged, you know, probably median number is maybe $750,000, but it could be plus or minus 250,000 either side of that. I mean, and, and I just-
The 500K to a million, somewhere in there.
I hope so. Yes. I, I would hope so.
All right. Okay. Thanks. So one final time, does anybody else have any questions?
Actually I-
Uh, go ahead.
Um, so there are no planned, um, cuts as far as layoffs. Uh, no layoffs are, are scheduled or considered at this point.
We would hopefully, you know, we've looked at every possible scenario. Um, and we're prepared for worst-case scenarios. But for us, that would be a worst-case scenario and one of our goals is to keep everybody employed. And I believe we're the largest employer in the city and it's vital to the economy of, of Stan that we can, that we can keep operating. So, um, yes, we've looked at every possibility. We're not ready to go there yet.
Well, I agree. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for attending our Zoom work session here. Uh, and thanks for the information you provided and the, the work that's continuing. Uh, and at this time, we're going to have a short five-minute break. So it's enough to refill your glass of water and then we'll be back.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Dole.
Thank you.
So Ms. Simmons, could you call the roll and see if we've got all the council members back and staff back?
Right now?
Uh, yes, because we're supposed to start back up at 6:15.
Okay. Vice Mayor Carr.
Trying to get the mute off. I'm here.
Ms. Oaks. Dr. Harrington.
I'm here.
Ms. Mead. Dr. Curran.
Present.
Mayor Dole.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Oaks.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Okay. So we're still waiting for Ms. Mead.
Ms. Mead. Okay.
I see your empty chair there.
She's out on the street.
Allie.
There she is.
All right. Welcome back everyone from our little mini break there. So, uh, item three and E on the regular meeting agenda is discussion of application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for a Virginia Industrial Revitalization Fund, uh, grant, uh, relating to the Arcadia Project. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Billy Vaughn, the city's Director of Economic Development will present this item.
Mayor Dole, may I interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
Harrington here. Uh, I'm going to need to recuse myself from this discussion and the subsequent vote because I serve as a member of the Board of, uh, Arcadia Project. So I'll be, you won't be hearing from me and it's not because I'm not interested.
You, you can take a longer break.
Well, okay. Might not come back.
All right. Thanks.
Madam Mayor and members of council, this is Billy Vaughn. This agenda item is a request by the Arcadia Project for the city to apply for an industrial revitalization fund grant in the amount of $600,000 from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. The purpose of this grant application in conjunction with other funding sources is to obtain adequate funding to renovate and transform the former Dixie Theater into a cultural center. The total project cost is a little, little over $2 million. The IRF grant, uh, requires a local dollar-to-dollar match. The local match requirement will be satisfied by the Arcadia Project. To be clear, city funding is neither required nor requested for the grant application. As outlined in the briefing, the proposed budget, uh, breakdown, $600,000 industrial revitalization fund grant, $600,000 grants from private foundations, $600,000 private donations and the remainder, $260,000 debt retirement or forgiveness. Pamela Mason Wagner, the Executive Director for the Arcadia Project and her team are available to provide more details on the project itself. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, and welcome, uh, Ms. Wagner.
Tom Wagner is with me as well on his own screen.
All right. Hello, Tom.
So it sounds like we're both unmuted. Is that correct?
I didn't hear Tom. Did he say anything?
He, he's still muted.
So Tom, can you unmute yourself? So Tom, can you unmute yourself? I'm going to be sharing my screen, so as soon as Tom is settled.
I am.
Okay. Uh, I will ask somebody to tell me if you can see a PowerPoint in front of you.
Yes, I see it.
All right. So, excellent. We will begin. Pam and Tom are both going to be speaking. I'm Pam.
I'm Tom. We're here tonight to present the Arcadia Project and seek council support for our industrial revitalization grant application to renovate the historic Dixie Theater. As was previously, previously mentioned, we're requesting $600,000 from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. That agreement is between the state and the Arcadia Project requiring no funds or staff time from the city, only a willingness to submit the grant on our behalf.
Now I have to figure out how to switch the slides. Okay, then. So we conducted a survey along with several listening sessions and developed a plan for an adaptive mixed-use facility featuring a movie theater, an event space, digital media classrooms, and a specialty food cafe.
Our research, including the survey, taught us several things. There was great interest centered on four key areas: film, food, technology, and music. Our programming will include music events, specialty film series, classes in cheesemaking and canning and pickling, and a conference center for small and medium-sized businesses.
Arcadia Pop Cafe provides a vibrant street presence, and revenue from the cafe will support the rest of the nonprofit's mission as demonstrated by our market study.
Our listening sessions with the philanthropic community told us the biggest obstacle to moving forward was the substantial debt on the Dixie Theater. So we approached Atlantic Union Bank and negotiated an 80% write-down of that debt. We raised the $70,000 that represented our portion. And as of July 2019, the Arcadia Project owns both buildings debt-free.
Through the Main Street Program, Susan Lancaster at Fraser &amp; Associates designed a fresh new exterior renovation to be implemented this summer. And like our interiors, it features historic charm with a modern twist.
A Main Street feasibility study grant administered by the SDDA that Pam just spoke about paid for structural assessment, architectural planning, and an independent market study that demonstrates income streams from each of the three main areas of the building can sustain the operation at 70% versus 30% donations after one year. And after five years, revenue reaches an 85% of expenses.
Arcadia Project's Board of Directors maintain legal authority over the organization and have been meeting monthly for over two years. You'll recognize some of those faces, I think.
Our renovation and startup costs are running about $1.8 million. $600,000 will come from private foundations, $600 from donors, and $600 from the industrial revitalization grant administered by the DHCD in Richmond.
So we hope this evening council will vote to make the Arcadia Project Stanton's 2020 submission to the Industrial Revitalization Fund. And now we'll take any questions. And to help us answer them, we have Michael Barnes on the line. Michael has written a couple of dreadful IRS grants for the City of Waynesboro and is a consultant helping us write these grants. Thank you, Billy, for all the time you've put into this. And thank you, council, for your time this evening.
Well, thank you for that additional information. And I will go down the list of council members and see who has any questions. Uh, Mr. Holmes?
Um, I have a couple of questions. One, would this include the old bowling alley beside? It's in between, uh, uh, Sanidola and the theater?
Excellent question. So the original plan when we entered the picture was to do that building first. But when we did our listening sessions and our survey, we knew that the community cares more about the historic Dixie Theater. So we decided to tackle that building first. And the goal is to successfully get that building back online and then use that to leverage bringing the building next door that you referred to with the bowling alleys back online.
And you're planning on doing like, like, uh, small concerts and stuff like that in there? You're going to, is it going to be mostly local people? Or are you going to bring people from out of the area?
I think we're open to both. Um, we hope to be a house that would present local musicians and creative people, spoken word artists, you know, the, the type of entertainment that we can host is vast. But it doesn't preclude from time to time bringing bigger acts from out of town. We'll just have to see how it turns out.
So at, at the Dixie Theater, our event space is limited to approximately 120 people. So that limits to some degree the kind of talent that you would bring in. A larger name, even a big regional name act probably wouldn't consider that space big enough to, 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 for us to book them. But there are a lot of in-between acts and of course, local talent that that's a perfect space for. And we think that's a good Stanton audience, a good size for a Stanton audience.
All right, all right, thanks. Uh, Ms. Oaks?
Uh, yes, um, now you'd mentioned there would be a, um, this is a matching grant, so there would have to be some funds put into it. However, these funds have already been raised.
We're in the process of raising the funds. We are both applying for grants. And we're also going for donations from both local and people all across the country.
Okay. Forgive me, how much was the matching grant amount that needs to be raised?
Well, we are raising 600 from the local private donors, 600 from foundations, and 600 from the IRF for a total of 1.8.
So it's a 100% matching, not 20% or anything like?
No.
600,000?
We're raising more than the required match, which is a 1 to 1?
Okay.
And the other thing to know about that is the bank, which in, in our negotiation forgave, um, 80% of, of the existing debt. Uh, that plus the money that we raised, um, can go towards the match. So we do have a, a big piece of, uh, a, a good chunk of change, as they say, already raised.
Okay, all right. And the state has committed to this funding, so it's earmarked, it's safe, it's not going anywhere because of COVID-19?
That's our understanding. Uh, we've been in close contact with them. And Michael, if you want to chime in now?
I would just say that, yeah, our understanding is that money has already been appropriated by the state and is available. Obviously, uh, it's a competitive grant and we will have to see how we fare against other localities that are applying.
Certainly, and that makes sense. Well, it would be great to see something happening, um, with, um, the beautiful buildings. I mean, they have a lot of history, they're beautiful, and I'd like to see them, um, alive and active again. But thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mead?
Thanks, I have no questions.
All right, thanks. Dr. Curran?
I don't have any questions either.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr?
Okay, I'm trying to be diligent with the mute. No, I don't have any other questions.
All right, thanks. All right, so this will be, uh, item E on the regular meeting agenda. And thank you very much for the information.
Thank you very much for your time and the, uh, and, and letting us present.
Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Um, we're in a little bit of a unique format, of course, here. But the question that you would typically pose is whether you wanted Mr. Vaughn to participate in the regular meeting and in fact, whether you wish to have the Wagners at the regular meeting as well.
Well, I think-
To take Mr. Vaughn's place if, um, if, uh, that meets with, with council's approval.
So if, if Mr. Rosenberg, if, if, if he can handle, uh, this item, we wouldn't need anyone else, right? I don't hear any answer.
I'm fine with it.
Same here.
Fine.
So let me make it clear for, um, the Wagners and Mr. Barnes that you are welcome to participate at 7:30 if you wish. And there will be, I will provide an abbreviated presentation um, in comparison to what was just presented to council. And, um, so your, your, your attendance and participation during the regular meeting is welcome but not required.
And how would you do that? Through the audio channel?
You, you can rejoin via the Zoom platform using the same connection.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And we are going to sign off now, though.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're on item four, an update on Stanton Crossing Economic Development Business Plan. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is on council's work session agenda this evening in response to a request that we had from you at least six, perhaps nine, nine months ago to provide a quarterly update to council concerning progress with the Stanton Crossing development. Billy Vaughn, the Economic Development Director, remains with us during the work session and will present this item with an assist from Tim Davy of the Timmons Group who joins us on the Zoom platform.
Welcome.
Good to see you, Mayor Dole, members of council. Mr. Rosenberg, thank you for letting me be here. Madam Mayor, Members of Council, this is Billy Vaughn. I plan to briefly update you on the, on the four items that were outlined in the briefing. I will touch on the demolition, crossingway extension, and invite Tim Davy of the Timmons Group to engage in the discussion and then lead the discussion on the site characterization and on the marking plan. Uh, before I touch on the demolition, I want to share a bit of good news with you. Uh, earlier this week, staff met with the Holtzman Oil Representatives. Uh, they had a pre-con meeting at the site. Of course, Holtzman is proposing to build a 7-Eleven and convenience store with gas. Uh, and they plan to break ground in about two weeks. This site is on the left as you drive into Stanton Crossing, uh, crossingway before you get to the roundabout. So just want to share that with you.
Well, oh, oh, thank heaven. For us old enough to remember that anyway.
For 7-Eleven.
Uh, the demolition. Last week, the city posted a notice to rescind the intent to award uh, to the Kentucky Company. Uh, this decision is due in part to the budgetary and fiscal constraints uh, that the city is currently experiencing. But also because of the company's delay and inability to obtain a license to do business in the state of Virginia. It's been over four months. At this point, uh, we may be, um, rebidding the project in 30 to 60 days. Of course, uh, that depends heavily on the city's financial status at that time. Um, this, with this project, total budget by 2.5. About 20% of the project is being funded by a Virginia Economic Development Partnership Brownfields Grant, uh, which would help us deal with the environmental issues on the site. I have reached out to the state representative to request an extension of the use of the funds. Our current deadline is November of this year. So we're in the process of drafting, uh, an email or a letter making an official request. He stated to me that we simply needed to, uh, propose whether we needed a three-month, six-month extension. And they would consider that, and he really didn't see any real issues with that. Uh, effective this Friday, uh, we are laying off our clerk of the works for the demolition. Since the project is being delayed, uh, we did not see a need to continue that employment. Any questions on the demolition?
Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, sir.
Um, this morning it was discussed or asked about the second lowest bidder. Could you explain what we are not going to do with that?
I will direct that to the Director of Finance, Mr. Phil Treier. Uh, I think he responded to that question this morning.
Yeah, since it's been such a huge time lag between when the, uh, when, when we had our bid opening and, and until today and the, and the contractor, uh, was unable to obtain their license, we are going to go ahead and try to rebid this. Um, there was a huge disparity between the low bidder and the second low bidder of over $700,000. And that's partially the reason why we were so patient, uh, with, with the apparent low bidder. We are hoping that with the current economic conditions that, uh, and, and with, with the fact that we had a, a bid that was $700,000 lower, that subsequent RFPs may produce, um, lower bids. And that's what we're counting on. We, we are, we are assuming that, uh, the economy is going to start to pick up in, in the next 60 days. And, uh, we will be ready for a quick RFP, uh, uh, which, which will take about 30 days at most.
Thank you, Mr. Treier.
I have a question. Um, uh, uh, thank you. So the, um, the bid was $700,000 lower, or approximately that amount, which is great. But I'm curious, do y'all know why, uh, this particular firm could not get a Virginia license?
Um, we have nothing official from the state. Um, we just know that, um, it's, it's, it's taken an extended period of time.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
The next item, if there are no other questions, is the crossingway extension. Uh, this is, uh, the VDOT Smart Scale Project. Price tag of $8.7 million of VDOT money, or state monies. Uh, according to a conversation, uh, with David Robinson, who is a senior project manager for this project, uh, the design has been approved by VDOT. And the project is still on track to move forward. The next step is for right-of-way acquisition. What that simply means is, uh, the land is currently owned by the EDA. It will have to be dedicated to the city for the construction of this, uh, extension. Similar process that we used when the original entrance and Boulevard on Crossing Way was constructed. That's all I have on the extension. Um, and at this time, I'd like to invite Tim Davy with, with the Timmons Group to engage in the discussion and the presentation of the next two items. Thank you, Billy. Tim Davy with Timmons Group. And again, I'm thrilled to be here and thrilled to continue to be part of the team to try to advance Stanton Crossing. The first item Billy asked me to talk about was the program that the state has since rolled, has recently rolled out, where they evaluated 460 pieces of property across Virginia to try to determine how ready they were for, uh, economic, to recruit and attract economic development. Decision Stanton was at the leading edge of that a number of years ago when the program was a grant program whereby you could actually petition the state for some money to go ahead and evaluate your site and try to tell the world how ready it was for economic development. And then, of course, you could go ahead and go as far as certifying your site with a tier ranking, either tier 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. You may remember from some of the conversations we had last year at the-
You may remember from some of the conversations we had last year at this time, Stanton Crossing is currently a tier 2, and we've already identified a path forwards to take it to a tier 3 and a tier 4. So that became a template that the state really appreciated to try to make some common vernacular amongst the state and the site selection people and the developers and the private sectors about how ready and how marketable states are across, or the sites are across the Commonwealth. So now you have 459 other participants that have figured out a way to catch up to where you guys were in certifying your site and having a game plan for moving things forward. I'd state that because what Stanton Crossing has basically pointed out is a couple key advantages, both from an aspect of trying to figure out, you know, how marketable a site is, but then also how it aligns with the other part of the state's program, which was how does the real estate align with the workforce and the markets that we see going to be important for the state of Virginia going forward. So the other part of the certification program, in addition to trying to tell the state how far along the sites were from a marketability perspective, they also brought in KPMG to study how well the sites fit certain demographics and certain market sectors that the state feels are great potential for growth. So again, in certain parts of the state, you might have a wonderful advanced manufacturing facility, but if there isn't workforce there to go ahead and fill the jobs, then it's very difficult for the state to sell that site for advanced manufacturing. So they're trying to put a business plan in place that makes both, provides more product, which is your site, and provides that product aligned towards the right markets, which is the different sectors. So that's pretty much, where Stephen Murray and VEP has convinced the General Assembly that we need to go with more product. They put a budget number together and requested that budget number, and I haven't seen where the governor's recent emergency responses to the budget has really taken away any of that money. But the idea is to try to get as many pieces of real estate in Virginia up to tier 4 as is practical. That's very much aligned with what you had already put in motion. Let's try to get Stanton Crossing to a tier 4. So we do believe that the pieces of property that are in the right location, that are in the right ownership, that have the tier 4 certification, and that are aligned with the state's marketing strategies are the sites that are going to be successful going forward. So for me, it really does validate a lot of the work that the city of Stanton has already done, and I think we're in a very, very good position going forward to try to see if we can attract economic development, meaning jobs and capital investment, to the city of Stanton.
All right, are there, is there anything else, Mr. Vaughn, that you want to add to that?
No, I think that Tim did a great job, as usual.
So council members, do you have any questions about any of those other three items?
Actually, I do. This is Andrea Oakes.
Evening.
Hi. It's my understanding, like a tier 4, that's the cream of the crop. I mean, that's like utopia as far as the tier ratings are concerned. If we didn't have COVID-19, I mean, under what's considered a perfect environment, how long does it really take for a development to reach tier 4?
So from buying the land to doing the research, to zoning the land, and getting the plans approved such that you're at tier 4, it can take four or five years to get that far along, depending on where you start. So tier 4 by description is that you have all of your diligence done to attract a business and investment. You have all of the designs of the infrastructure done such that you're ready to go with your sewer lines and your water lines and your roads. And basically, what it's intended to do is if a customer selects your site, in the time that they can build their building, you can build your infrastructure so they meet, and you have an operating business, you know, within about 12 months of them selecting your site. That's really what the definition of tier 4 is. So there is some sites in Virginia that would suggest they're a step higher, which is tier 5. There's only two of them that I'm aware of. Those are sites that have actually gone ahead and designed the site plan, estimated what the business would be, built a pad that's there, ready for a speculative developer to come in, and you're really pad-ready. That's tier 5. We believe, and the state really does confirm, that for a site, especially a large site and a large municipal-owned site that is in a position to attract advanced manufacturing, tier 4 is the most responsible thing to do.
Okay, so essentially, it's an investment.
Yes, well said. It's an investment, which is, you know, part of what we're going to talk about next, you know, that we're looking for you to get a great return on. It's not, shouldn't be considered an expense.
Thank you.
Tim, Tim or Billy, this is Ophi. One question on the Spine Road and the possible timeframe to start that. Do you have any ideas on that?
I would say probably a year from now, the actual construction will start. I think November of this year is when they would either place the bids on the street or the, I don't have an intent to award, but I would say March 2021.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you for the information update on Stanton Crossing Project. And in the interest of staying on time, we need to move to our next item. And thanks to Tim for joining us tonight. Item 5 is a discussion of Augusta Health Initiative Imaging Center. Mr. Rosenberg?
Oh, excuse me. I guess you're looking at me. Hi, this is Leslie Beauregard.
Mr. Rosenberg didn't unmute, so.
Did he say something?
He said all kinds of nice things about you, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Thank you, Mayor Dull. I'm obviously an old dog learning new tricks. Yes, Ms. Beauregard will present this item.
Okay, thank you very much. So this tonight is an informational item, as you're aware, and I'm just going to walk you through that very quickly. So as you're aware, recently Augusta Health met with city officials to request the city's support and cooperation in connection with two hospital initiatives. This particular one I'm speaking of is the imaging center. The 340B drug pricing program will be the last item revisit after this item is finished. Just briefly, Augusta Health has applied to the Virginia Department of Health for a certificate of public need for new imaging facilities to be included as part of a new outpatient pavilion on its campus in Fishersville. And that application proposes one MRI scanner and one CT scanner, which will improve the level of service to Augusta Health's service area. And Augusta Health has requested that city council adopt a resolution expressing its support for the application. However, staff only recently learned, last week in fact, that there's a potentially competing proposal from Centerra RMH Medical Center for a center to be located on Community Way in Stanton. That will also include one MRI and one CT scanner. Staff is in the process of seeking further information from Centerra on its proposal, and the staff recommendation for now is to continue the review. And once we complete this review, staff will return to city council with additional information and give both providers the opportunity to present their proposals. We did speak to the Virginia Department of Health last week, and they expressed to us that based on the timeline, we do have time to do this, and will return to council in May with both proposals. So for this evening's meeting, for this purpose, I asked Augusta Health, I informed them that they would not be doing a formal presentation on this item quite yet, to allow staff more time to explore the second proposal, and that presentation would be made available in the next several weeks. And I'll stop there, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council members, do you have questions on this?
I do.
Dr. Harrington?
Would either of these installations involve the receipt of tax revenue by the localities in which they're established? For example, if Centerra established that process in Stanton, would there be a tax revenue implication for us?
I would have to double-check this, but I believe they would be tax exempt, but I will double-check that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? I should go down the list, I guess. Vice Mayor Kyer?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Curran?
No questions.
Thanks. Ms. Mead?
No questions.
Thanks. Ms. Oaks?
Yes. So the site for Augusta Health would be located in Fishersville?
Yes, ma'am.
And the site that Centerra RMH is considering will be located in the city of Stanton?
That is correct.
All right, I'll hold off on any further questions until city staff's been able to come back with more information.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Mr. Holmes?
Yes, we are getting tax revenue off of that property now, aren't we? On the old Ryan Steakhouse?
If it's a restaurant, yes.
Well, it's closed. It's been closed.
But yeah, so yes, as a restaurant, we would receive, or any, yeah, type of business like that, yes, sir, we'd receive tax revenue.
Okay.
We're actually getting property tax revenue on that right now.
Real estate, real estate tax, yeah. Okay, so we'll just wait to hear about the other proposal upcoming, you say in May?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you. So at this time, we can move on to the next item, which is item 6 and its F on our regular meeting agenda, which is a discussion of Augusta Health Initiative 340B Drug Pricing Program. And Ms. Beauregard, you're handling this too, right?
I am.
All right.
So I'm just going to say very quick words about this, and then I'm going to let Mark LaRosa, who is here from Augusta Health, take it from here. This is the second initiative I mentioned in my opening comments previously regarding a 340B drug pricing program. Again, Augusta Health is seeking the city's support of the participation in this program. There is an MOU that's in your packet you all have reviewed by now that will be on the regular agenda for you all to take a vote on when we get to that point. And now I am happy to turn it over to Mark LaRosa, who I saw on Zoom. There he is, and I'll let him introduce who he is with. Say thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Leslie, and thank you, council members, for allowing us to bring our resolution to you this evening. It's a great way for us to help reduce the cost of drugs in the community. It's a federal program that is available to hospitals, and we meet the criteria for that. And so what I'm going to do is turn it over to John Catianas, who is our Chief Financial Officer, who can tell you a little bit about the program and how it works, and how you can help us achieve that goal.
Good evening, folks. It's a pleasure to be here with you. 340B program dates back from 1992 to the Public Service Act, and it required pharmaceutical manufacturers to provide discounts on cost of drugs to hospitals that serve a large number of uninsured and underinsured and medically underserved populations. With the enactment of Medicaid expansion in the state, the primary, back up, the primary driver of it is number of Medicaid days that you provide to members of the community. And with Medicaid expansion, the enrollment in Medicaid went up dramatically in the state and within our area. Approximately 25% of the people that previously were on, that are now on Medicaid, due to expansion, previously were on the insurance exchange and buying other products or buying their insurance off their, off the exchange. Subsequent to the enactment of 340B program, as you may be aware of, the IRS has put in a lot of regulations called 501-R, which requires hospitals to have a financial assistance policy. Augusta Health has always had a financial assistance policy, but this is one of these situations where the regs are kind of a little bit out of sync due to one preceding the other. The memorandum of understanding that we're asking for your consideration is required for us to file for 340B and to be approved for the program. So it's an understanding that we need to have with our local community in order to participate in the program. And it basically is, it says that, you know, we provide services to the folks in Stanton. It is our desire and our commitment to continue to offer financial assistance for those that require it, and that this is an acknowledgement by the city that they accept our commitment to continue to follow our financial assistance policy, which is available for anybody to review on our website. And then tells a little bit about the organization. And again, what this will allow us to do is buy some pharmaceutical drugs for bigger discounts, and then those discounts are made available to the folks that qualify for. So it's a way of driving down the cost to the folks that have the least ability to pay for those services. So you have the agreement in front of you. Be happy to answer any questions, but request your support so we can move forward. We're trying to get our information in before the end of the month in order to hopefully get a qualification date of July 1st, but certainly no later than October 1st, which is when we then start having to impact.
All right, thank you so much. Council members, we'll go down the list and see who has any questions. Dr. Harrington?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
As far as people covered, would it be people who make up to 400% over the poverty level, or was, did I misread that?
Coverage for financial assistance is anybody who has earnings that are below 400% of the federal poverty level. So I think it's, I think it's a little bit flip-flop. It's again for, and then it's driven by their income and their family size is what determines what they're available for.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Oaks?
No questions, just a comment. This sounds great, and I plan on supporting it.
Thank you.
Ms. Mead?
Just a quick question. Can you give me an example of the kinds of medications this would provide for folks and the kind of discounts that they would get as a result? Just a ballpark.
Well, the ballpark discount for drugs that qualify is about 30% off of its usual price from the pharmaceutical manufacturer. And so then, you know, mainly, big part that it applies to is for outpatient drugs. You'll see it in the infusion center, the oncology center in particular, which is where some of the highest-cost drugs are available. But it's across the board. It's mainly for outpatient services.
Thank you.
Dr. Curran?
No questions, just, it sounds good. I will support it.
All right, thanks. Vice Mayor Kyer?
No, I have no questions.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that, this will be item F on our regular meeting agenda. Do we feel the need to have anyone other than Mr. Rosenberg to present, or Ms. Beauregard to present this in the regular meeting?
No.
No.
All right, so, Mr. LaRosa, you all are welcome to listen in or to stay on, but we don't, we won't require your presence for the presentation in the regular meeting.
Okay, well, thank you, Mary.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Dahl, and thank you, council, for supporting our initiative.
All right, thank, thank you so much. All right, with that, we are, we are now on break until the regular meeting at 7:30. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Stanton City Council for April 23rd, 2020. And this is an electronic communications meeting. I note that this meeting is being convened with city council members using the Zoom platform, broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. At this time, I'd ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting. Ms. Simmons?
Mayor Dahl?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Here.
Ms. Oaks?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Dr. Harrington?
Here.
Ms. Mead?
Here.
Dr. Curran?
Here.
I have confirmed all council members are present.
Thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg now identify his location and those city officials or colleagues, if any, present with him at that location and the participation of anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, I'm participating on the Zoom platform from my residence in Stanton. There is no one with me at this location. Other city staff or officials participating on the Zoom platform are Faith Simmons, Clerk of Council, Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, Doug Gwynne, City Attorney, and Phil Trayer, Chief Finance Officer. And I expect later in the meeting, we will be joined by Greg Campbell, Executive Director of the Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport Commission, and Maggie Reagan, Commissioner of the Revenue.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of the electronic communications nature of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. This meeting has also been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page. Access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During the three public hearings toward the beginning of the meeting and matters from the public on council's agenda towards the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters at the appropriate time may call 844-854-2222 and follow the pre-recorded prompts to ask a question. The public is reminded that though the pre-recorded prompts refer to questions, public hearings and matters from the public are times for council simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Comments concerning the public hearing items may also be made by sending an email to the clerk of council at s i m m o n s s f at c i dot Stanton dot V A dot U S. No later than Thursday, April 30th. Detailed instructions for public participation have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at W W W dot C I dot Stanton dot V A dot U S forward slash government, forward slash city hyphen council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by Zoom, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impracticable or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council Ordinance 2020 dash oh four regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at W W W dot Stanton dot V A dot U S forward slash C O G O R D 2020 dash zero four. Given that we are conducting this meeting by Zoom with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and broadcast over the cable system as it occurs, I believe it merits reminder of a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I emphasize the request that each speaker speak loudly and slowly and self-identify each and every time when speaking so that it will be clear who is speaking before your remarks are made. Second, please pause after each speaker to allow a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, all votes will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes. Fifth, I ask that if any member of city council has to leave the meeting for any period of time, to please interject and make an announcement so that the clerk may take note of attendance in the minutes. I ask that you also announce your return so that it also may be reflected in the meeting minutes. Finally, I ask everyone's patience because without being in the same room, it is likely that a speaker may not realize that another speaker is continuing. Again, we may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We'll take whatever time is necessary so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. I will now take questions from council members and participants if you have any questions about this process. So council members, do you have any questions at this time about the process?
No.
No, I have no questions.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, one point of clarification concerning the public participation portions of the meeting. The complete details to access during the public hearing items A, B, and C, and during matters from the public are on the city council website. And you've given the web address for that. But I want to, let, let me just reiterate that the number to call is 844-854-2222. And that when callers are connected, they will need to enter an access code to be placed in the queue to provide their comments. The access code is on the city council website, but it is 619-358 followed by the pound sign. And that number again is 619-358 followed by the pound sign. And that, that information, the phone number and the access code can be found on the city council webpage. And I think that it would be, it, it will probably be several minutes before we arrive at the public hearing portion of the meeting. But callers are certainly welcome to call now to be placed in the queue. And while they're on hold, they will hear the audio from this meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Dahl, can you hear me?
Yes.
My screen is, I stopped appearing on my screen and now it's just blank. That's no great loss particularly, but should I just log out and come back?
Dr. Harrington, this is Steve Rosenberg. It's your choice. You can, if you're content participating only with the audio, that's fine. If you'd like to leave the meeting and join again, you certainly can attempt that.
I think I'll try that. I'll be back in a minute. They'll go ahead without me.
All right, thanks. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right, all right.
And so what we plan to do here is everyone stand up and we should have an image there of the flag. And so we'll repeat the Pledge of Allegiance at this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is the mayor's report. I would just like to mention to everyone that, that the May elections are not going to be moved to November. So they may happen on May 5th as originally scheduled. And at worst, they would only be moved two weeks. So I encourage everyone to get their absentee ballot. To, you have to fill out an application or you could, there's so many ways you can do it. You can call down there, you can set up an appointment and meet them in the parking garage and vote absentee in person. You can sign up online. You can track the progress of your application when you mail it back. You can go online and see that they've received it, what date. And as well, you can see when they've received your ballot to, to record it. So it's very, very important that we do this because I think even if it was moved two weeks, we're still going to be in the same social distancing and, and staying at home situation that we're in now. So I, I just encourage everyone to get, get your vote recorded. It's important. And then I would like to just once again thank our city staff for the hard work they're doing during this crisis, as well, our citizens who, who are sheltering like they should be. And I do want to take the opportunity to encourage them to please wear masks if you have to go to a grocery store and go inside or go to Lowe's or if you're out and about wherever, to, to wear a mask. And I think that's recommended by the CDC. So we'd like to follow what our scientists and doctors are telling us to do. And so with that, I would ask, are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Dahl?
Ms. Mead?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a minute to recognize, well, really, there are so many people in the community who are doing so much to help folks get through this, to do things, extraordinary things that they've never done before. One of those people is actually on this call tonight, and I'm gonna probably embarrass her by recognizing Natasha McCurdy, who's a member of our school board. And when this started, Natasha couldn't actually sew. But, but in, she's just finished making, sewing 200 masks to supply to folks in the community who need them for, for whatever reason, but, but a variety of purposes. So I just wanted to thank her specifically for all the work she's doing for people in the community.
All right, thank, anyone else?
Mayor Dahl?
Ms. Oaks?
I would like to review some of the items that the COVID-19 Response Fund Coalition has, has done since the onset of the COVID-19. This group is headed up by Dan Lehman with the Community Foundation. I'm gonna give you guys a dense version of this, but if you can bear with me. Access to medical care, $7,500 has been given to Augusta Expo, along with Augusta Health giving $75 to Augusta Expo to be set up as a temporary MASH-like unit. $2,500 has been given to Augusta, Augusta Expo. And again, Augusta Health has also provided $2,500 to help cover the personnel costs that they've encountered while trying to set up this medical resource. As far as access to mental health, $21,500 has been given to Arrow Project, Valley Hope Counseling, and Valley Pastoral Counseling to cover fees associated with the telehealth provision. Now, this is given so the, there can be ongoing consultation with folks that may need guidance when it comes to depression and they just need to have some sort of human contact during this time of COVID-19. $5,000 has been given to the Valley Hope by the Wayne'sboro Rotary. $5,000 to the Valley Pastoral Recovery to purchase technology needed to do the telehealth services has been given by Capsol. Access to food, $25,000 to cover 50% of the cost associated with 30 days for food for Saul, Stanton, Augusta County, Wayne'sboro, Highland and Nelson regions. All of this is under the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank. $2,000 to Disciples Kitchen for two months of food. Keyville Kitchen in Charlottesville is providing 280 meals a week to the Valley Mission through June. $15,000 to a collaboration with Augusta Health, Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, V-Pass, and Allegheny Mountain Institute to secure fresh and shelf-stable food for area seniors. $1,500 to Central United Methodist Church for their soup kitchen. $7,500 to the United Way for the purchase of groceries and gas cards for the use of mutual aid infrastructure. The United Way also contributed $2,500 to that effort under shelter. $4,500 to the Wayne'sboro and Stanton Salvation Army programs for emergency services. $15,000 to the Valley Mission to enable them to move the residents to Mary Baldwin University. $5,000 to Mary Baldwin to support the move. $5,000 has been given to the Wayne'sboro, has been given by the Wayne'sboro Rotary to the Warm Shelter. Childcare, $15,000 to the Wayne'sboro Y N C A. They're providing childcare for essential workers. Community childcare in Stanton has also started providing childcare services to essential worker. General financial obligations, $1,680 to DSS for software to help with TeleWorks for their 165-person workforce. $10,000 from Hershey to the United Way for personal care packages distributed to V-Pass, Wayne'sboro Y N C A, and school fund distribution sites. There's been $25,000 donated to the Stanton Creative Community Fund by the Community Foundation. This is zero interest loans, up to $5,000. And 50% of the loan will be forgiven. Each locality has also provided some loan funds for small business support through various lenders. So that's my update.
All right, any other items by members of council? Make sure that you unmute.
Okay, there we go. Two, two things. I would also like to thank Natasha for what she's doing. But there's another person on this Zoom meeting, and that's Mr. Holmes, that has made a tremendous donation also to a company making masks for people. I don't think he'd want me to say what he donated, but I greatly appreciate what he did. And with that said, I'll get to business. And the nominations committee has a nomination that they would like to present to council, to the Tourism Advisory Board, to reappoint John, John Higgs to a three-year term beginning May 1st, 2020, and expiring April 30th, 2023. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Mayor Dahl?
Aye.
Is Dr. Harrington on?
Aye. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any additional items? All right, if not, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I wondered if we could have a motion for the two could have a motion for the two special emergency meetings?
Mayor Doll?
Ms. Mead?
I move to approve the minutes of the special emergency meetings of March 18th, 2020, and March 24th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Dr. Curran? Dr. Curran?
You're muted, Eric.
Aye. Actually, I don't see. Oh, there we go.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes from March 26th?
Mayor Doll?
Ms. Mead?
I move to approve the minutes of the work session and regular meeting of March 26th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Doll?
Yes.
I wasn't at that meeting, so I would have to not vote on this.
All right. One abstention. Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, I would entertain a motion regarding the regular meeting of April 9th?
Mayor Doll?
Ms. Mead?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 9th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're now at Item A, which is a public hearing of an ordinance to establish a budget for FY 2021. Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I could, for a moment, again, address some of the logistics here. Our IT staff is telling me that we have people who are in the queue, but they are not poised yet to ask questions. So let me just clarify for the public that there are several steps to be followed there on the City Council website. And if you bear with me, the City Council website is www.cI.stanton.vA.us/government/citycouncil. And at that site, you will find instructions to join the queue to ask your questions. The first step is to dial the toll-free number 844-854-2222. When you are prompted, enter the access code for the meeting, 619-358-pound. You will then hear, "Q and A session has started." And to ask your question, please press star six. And when you hear that, press star six. You will then hear a prompt that says, "If you'd like to ask a question, please press 1 to add yourself to the queue." And at that point, you press 1, and then you'll be added to the queue to make your comment during the public hearing. I recognize that these steps take a little effort. They are, again, on the City Council website so that they can be read, followed in detail. And I hope that that's helpful to people who are trying to get through, to ask, or to provide comments to City Council during the public hearings. Mayor Doll, you've called for the public hearing on Item A, and I know that as we progress, you will actually open the public hearing, not only on Item A, but on Items B and C. Item A is the public hearing on an ordinance to establish a budget for FY 2021. Item B is public hearing of an ordinance to increase water user fee. And Item C is public hearing of an ordinance to increase refuse and recycling rates. And Mayor Doll, when you do open those public hearings, so that the public will understand, they can add themselves to the queue and provide comment on any one of those three subjects in no particular order. And before the public hearings are opened, our Chief Finance Officer, Phil Trayer, will provide some background to council and the public concerning all three subjects. Mr. Trayer?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here for a public hearing on the FY 21 budget ordinance, which was first introduced to council on March 26, 2020. This represents the maximum amount our budget can be approved for without re-advertising and additional public hearings. As you were aware from our last meeting, the FY 21 budget is currently being revised downwards, but much of the same structure will remain in place. Therefore, input from the public is germane. Cost reductions totally $4.6 million are currently being incorporated into the revised budget. The revised budget includes the following: the elimination of real estate tax increase; elimination of the 2% wage increase, which was to have been effective on January 1, 2021. That produced a savings of approximately $183,000; reduction of the local transfer to the schools as per the traditional revenue sharing formula of $1.9 million; deferral of FY 21 CIP expenditures built into the budget of $941,000; reduction of other line items, including non-compensation of port on labor, $634,000; and reductions due to personnel actions of $944,000. Again, the original budget ordinance totaled $122,153,526 and consisted of the following: the general fund, $60.6 million; debt service fund, $4.8 million; CIP fund, $941,000; Blue Ridge Court Services, $1.1 million; water fund, $5 million; sewer fund, $4.6 billion; parking fund, $540,000; stormwater fund, $1.3 million; environmental fund, $3.3 million; education fund, $34.6 million; cafeteria fund, $1.5 million; textbook fund, $276,000; school CIP, $200,000; and school state-operated program of $3 million. This ordinance, the original ordinance, did include a real estate tax increase, which is being revised out. It also included water rate increases of 5%. These additional funds will go towards major CIP projects, which are scheduled over the next four years, including the $6.9 million Gardner Springs Pump House project in FY 23, and Phase 1 of the North River Pipeline Replacement Project, $6.5 million in FY 24. To be clear, the main objective is to build a rate structure which will support debt service required for these two critical projects. The refuge increases is also incorporated into the original budget, and that is 10%. Revenues will go primarily towards scheduled CIP projects, as well as maintaining the recycling program within the city. Projects include landfill development, scale house relocation, office construction, and heavy equipment replacement. In conclusion, I'd like to reiterate, the original budget amendment represents a ceiling, and staff is currently working to reduce these numbers by $4.6 million. We have budget work sessions scheduled for April 30th, May 7th, May 14th, and next week. At April 30th work session, we plan on providing a revised FY 21 budget to council. The school budget is currently being updated, but may not be available for reporting until the following week. Adoption is scheduled for May 14th. That's all that I have at this time.
All right. Thank you so much.
Ms. Simmons?
So at this time, we're gonna have all three public hearings on the budget for FY 2021, for an ordinance to increase the water user fee, and an ordinance to increase refuse and recycling rates. So at this time, I will open the public hearing of an ordinance to establish a budget for FY 2021. I will also open a public hearing of an ordinance to increase water user fee, and I will open the public hearing of an ordinance to increase refuse and recycling rates. And we are ready to hear from the public.
So, Madam Mayor, I can tell you and members of council that at the present time, there is no one in the queue. So let me step through the instructions another time, if council will bear with me. In the event there are individuals who are attempting to join the queue to provide comments to council, before I do that, I again note that these instructions are on the City Council website at www.cI.stanton.vA.us/government/citycouncil. The instructions include the following. First, dial a toll-free number, 844-852-2222. When prompted, enter the access code for the meeting, 619-358-pound. You will then hear the following statement: "Q and A session has started. To ask your question, please press star six." After you press star six, you will hear the following statement: "If you'd like to ask a question, please press 1 to add yourself to the queue." Once you press 1, you will be placed in the queue, and you will hear the audio feed of the meeting. And then you wait until you are prompted by the moderator, and then you can share your comments with council. Now, in the time that I was repeating those instructions, I saw that we did have one caller added to the queue. They are no longer in the queue. So I might suggest that we wait just a moment and see whether anyone joins, having provided, again, the instructions and the location on the city's website where they can be found and followed.
And Mr. Rosenberg, I could add that the instructions can also be found at the bottom of the regular meeting agenda. If anybody was looking at the agenda, if you go to the very end of it, all the instructions are written out there for you.
And in addition, Mayor Doll, I would note that public comment may also be provided by email to the clerk's email address, which is also on the agenda, or by calling the clerk at her phone number, which is also on the agenda. So I can tell you, Mayor, and members of council, that the one caller that I saw was our IT staff checking to make sure that the system was functioning as it is supposed to, and I can confirm that it is working the way that it is supposed to. So still, at this point, I do not see any callers in the queue. And now, we do have a caller who has joined, Mayor Doll, and let's see whether
All right.
they come on the line. I believe we have a caller.
Yes, please state your name and address.
Richard Bolstein, 113 Oaks Terrace, Stanton. My question, well, my question is, you've answered a couple. You said you're not going to increase the real estate tax rate at this point. I guess I'm concerned that you're not going to have enough money to operate this year. And I'm wondering if one of the things you might put out there is, I think some people might have trouble paying their tax assessments in the first tax assessment in June, when they're due. Perhaps people who can afford to pay the entire year in June could do so out, and that would help. And then perhaps it can be arranged that people who want to pay every part of next year's adjustment in advance, if they can afford it, that would help the city get through this year. Those are just suggestions. Another thing, I know that there are some candidates running the City Council who think we ought to have free parking in the parking garage and in the lot, which I generally oppose because I don't think it's, I think we have plenty of free parking available right now. But perhaps it should be free parking for the extent of this coronavirus, perhaps maybe through the summer. So those are my suggestions. I'm finished, and I don't know how to hang up.
Well, thank you very much for your call.
You're welcome. Do I just press star to end this, or something?
My guess is you can just hang up, but I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Holmes, for the nomination.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, at the present time, there are no other callers in the queue.
And it could be that we're gonna be getting some public comment through emails or phone calls later. So with no further calls in the queue, I'm calling the public hearing of the ordinance to establish the budget for FY 21 closed, the public hearing of an ordinance to increase water user fee closed, and the public hearing of an ordinance to increase refuse and recycling rates closed at this time. So thank you for the one comment with the suggestions, and we may hear from some more input through email or phone calls. So at this time, we can move on to Item D, the presentation by Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport Commission. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Members of council, we have with us this evening, we did have with us this evening Greg Campbell, the Director of the Shenandoah Valley Airport Commission. Here he is now. Okay, great. And Maggie Reagan, the city's representative on the commission, is also with us this evening. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Campbell.
Welcome, Mr. Campbell.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of council. Thank you all for allowing us some time tonight to come in and give what is customarily the airport commission's annual update to council. I am joined tonight by Maggie Reagan, your representative to the airport commission. Maggie, would you like to say anything? Okay. Also want to thank you in advance for your patience, as we all get used to doing things in a little different way. Also want to thank you in advance for your patience as we all get used to doing things in a little different way. I'm going to attempt to share my screen so that we can run through the presentation that I have. Can you all see that?
No, sir.
No.
No. I would have to hire somebody who is about 50 years younger than me if I were going to achieve this.
Stand by just one minute if you want.
Well, just know that there are many of us who feel the same way.
Okay. Try that one more time.
Hey Greg, this is Leslie. You want me to share my screen? I have your latest version.
You could do that. That would be great.
Yep, let me get it up right now. And you can just walk me through it. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead, Greg. You just tell me when to go.
Okay, if you could advance the next slide.
Yeah.
So in keeping with our normal format of an annual update, I want to just start off talking about the airport as a whole, the airport and its vital role in the community. The airport plays a critical role in the community, both in good times and bad. In good times, in terms of economic development, access to our community, tourism, quality of life, but also during challenging times like this. So before we get into that, I do have some slides toward the end to talk about the current situation with COVID-19, but I want to talk about the positive aspects. So a little bit about the airport's impact in the community. According to a 2017 study by the Virginia Department of Aviation, Virginia's 66 public use airports have a big impact on the overall economic activity of the Commonwealth. Almost $23 billion in economic activity, almost $8 billion in payroll, and 146,000 jobs. Leslie, if we could just tab.
Okay.
As we go through these, you can just tab and fill out the whole page each time. On a daily basis, over 4,000 aircraft aircraft takeoff from Orlando, Virginia's airports, and every day about 23,000 visitors arrive in the state by commercial airline or general aviation aircraft. Each job in Virginia supports an additional 2.2 jobs in the Commonwealth. Next page, please. Specifically, as it relates to SHD, it's responsible for approximately 430 jobs in the community of payroll. Those positions owe about 20 million. Total economic activity generated by SHD equals approximately $60 million per year. And keep in mind, these are 2017 numbers, and this is before United entered service in the valley, which has certainly had a big impact and probably boosted these numbers far beyond what we're looking at. Next page, please. And in sort of giving you all an idea of what's happening at the airport, we always like to talk about the two sort of different categories. The first is general aviation. The second, I'll talk about in a few minutes, is the airline side. General aviation, as you know, is a big part of what happens at the airport, particularly corporate and business aircraft that utilize SHD to access their facilities and their investments here and to keep their operations going, represents over 90% of our airport operations. On a given day, the airport will see about 75 or 80 operations a day, and operation being a takeoff or landing. And currently, well, before the current crisis, six of those were airline operations. So the rest are pretty much business, corporate, and private aircraft. This is where we serve as being the front door to the community. Oftentimes, the airport is the first face that a prospective business or industry is going to see of our region or visitor. It's significant in the economic development efforts. We work closely with Mr. Vaughn, a servant or economic development authority. And we work hand in hand with our economic development professionals in the region and work with them to facilitate economic development through the airport. Traffic represents a wide variety of industries. Next page in the deck, please. But it's not all local. Certainly, it is here for those companies that are here to use to move their folks in and out. We see a lot of companies utilizing corporate airplanes, most any of the household names you think of in our community. Some of the larger employers, be it retail, manufacturing, distribution. Most of them have their own aircraft, and they've found that that's an efficient business tool to move their folks in and out of the valley. Some of them we'll see several times a week. But airports equal economic development and access to our community is critical. It's important if we're going to attract quality investment, existing business expansion, we oftentimes come into play. And certainly on the airline side, when you're looking at talent attraction, retaining good employees, and our employers are, having that access both in and out is important because it is a quality of life factor. Next page, please. This is just a sampling of some of the regular corporate visitors that we'll see. You can probably a lot of those names look familiar to you. And some of them, as I mentioned, we see several times a week. Next page, please. Sort of before we got to the current situation, this is kind of what an average day at the airport would look like on the ramp. You can see business and corporate aircraft parked there. If I were to run through the list of who owns those aircraft, you would recognize those local employers. And we see them on a frequent basis. It's kind of difficult to measure the passenger activity on this side of the house because corporate aircraft owners, business aircraft owners, and private aren't required to report passenger numbers to us. We do have, we are able to track operational numbers. But one of the biggest indicators we have about activity at the airport, which is primarily driven by business aircraft, is the sale of jet fuel. The airport commission operates the fuel concession, which is a significant source of revenue for the airport. And but it's also a metric that we use to determine our activity levels. Next page in the deck, please. You can see sort of the trend line. It's really interesting to, at the airport, you can, you can almost overlay this to kind of economic cycles as well. You can see the recession clearly there in 2008, 2009, 2010, starting the bottom, and then as we emerged in recovery. 2013 has a little spike there, and that's because we had an airline flying to Orlando three times a week, a low fare airline using a very large airplane that bought a lot of fuel, and they spiked those numbers a little bit in 13. If you could kind of flatten that out a little bit, you'll see the general trend line has been up since 2010. And we continue to move more and more fuel, with 2019 being really kind of a record year for us in terms of the amount of fuel we sold. The blue bar is jet fuel, which is what larger aircraft use, turbine powered and jet powered aircraft. The smaller gray box is aviation gasoline. So that's what smaller aircraft, like those used in flight training and recreational. So you can see that's not a significant part of our operations, and neither is it a significant part of our revenues. But it is important. And you can see this year for 2019, we will moved well over half a million gallons of jet fuel and about another 55,000 gallons of aviation gasoline for 2019. 2020 was also off to a good start, but as you might imagine, that's slowed a bit. Next page in the deck, please. Now we'll move on to the airline service. You all know that about two years ago, we, almost three, we, we were very fortunate to land United Airlines service powered by SkyWest, the premier regional airline in North America. Regional airlines make up about 65% of domestic flying. And SkyWest is the premier regional feeder for not only United, but they fly for American Delta and Alaska as well. They are a solid airline partner, and you all might recall after years of some subpar service for some other carriers that have struggled through the years. We finally really were fortunate in landing SkyWest and United. You can see solid airline partner with impressive operational performance, 97.8% completion. And when you're looking at well over 100 flights a month, that is impressive. And this is a, this is their statistics at SHD. I can tell you network wide, SkyWest performance is like that. SkyWest operates in about 270 communities throughout the United States. And they they do that with that same operational performance that we see here in our market. The other thing that has been fantastic about this is this is United Airlines service for our community. Full integration with United. It's not a, it's not an interline agreement or a weak code share agreement. It is a full integrated United product. So we have United Airlines service. It just happens to be powered by SkyWest. The service is also unique in that it's jet service. The valley historically has not had passenger jet service. And it's also unique in that United really wanted, they really believe this market has potential, and they really wanted to give us the best opportunity to make this service successful. So they gave us service to both Washington Dulles and Chicago O'Hare, which are both hubs for United Airlines. And the two hubs are very complementary in their service patterns. Washington Dulles serves the East Coast, the Northeast very well, and also serves international fairly well. Chicago serves sort of the middle part of US, West Coast, and a lot of other international. Actually, Chicago does everything really well. Chicago is now the the largest connecting hub airport in the United States. It has passed Atlanta. And because of this reliable, well-connected, united branded service, passenger traffic has rebounded dramatically in the last two and a half years. And that's resulted recently in United and SkyWest adding additional flights to our schedule in the December 2019 schedule, where we were, we were able to add a third round trip into the schedule at their risk, which was working out really, really well. And and we think that bodes well for our future in terms of what we can move with traffic. Next page, please. So don't just take my word for it. The proof's kind of in the numbers. And if you see the, let's just go by the color coding and take a look at the the green bar at the bottom. That was the the first quarter of 2018 when we had via airlines, which really struggled in the market, and the passenger numbers reflected that. You can see in April, the blue bars, April of 2018, when SkyWest and United took took over our market, you can see the immediate jump and reception by the community and the passenger traffic increasing dramatically. You see a peak there in the summer months, and then it starts to wane. That's somewhat seasonal. You know, when when back to school and things like that happen, a lot of vacation travel winds down. Business travel doesn't really ramp up until October. So it's sort of a seasonal flat. But also, when the service started originally, the Chicago service involved a one stop en route to Chicago at another community. And the reason United did this was Chicago route's fairly expensive because it's a longer flight, and they wanted to make sure that we could put enough passengers on the airplane for the route to be viable. And they determined quickly, with the support that we saw from our community in the first couple of months, that we didn't need to share the airplane with another community, which was actually holding our market back, and we could do much better on our own. So our Chicago service in the fall of 2018 became nonstop, and you can see that reflected in October, which at that time was a record month, but we shattered that record many other times. Then you can see the gray bars kind of overlaid on top of this. And this reflects what we saw in 2019. Just about every month in 2019, we saw a 20 to 30% increase in passenger traffic over the same month of 2018. Year over year, 20 to 30% increase just about every month. And that's an apples to apples comparison. And it just shows the depth in the market. It shows that our folks that had been, maybe because the service wasn't great in the past with some of the other carriers, had been forced to drive to other airports and use other options. But those folks were really preferred to fly local, and we're coming back to their home airport and flying from SHD. And according to the leakage study we just conducted back in the fall, even with this success, we're still, there's still a huge amount of potential of folks that that we feel like we can get them back off the road and flying local. And then that leads us to the beginning of 2020. You can see the red line. Keep in mind, the extra flight frequency was added in December. You can see the the last month of 2018, the last gray dot, 3,700 passengers, which, again, another record. And that involved the extra flight frequency, the extra flights up to Dulles in December. You can see that 2020 got off to a really good start. January and February were up again, just like that trend was continuing. And those were very strong months. And then you can see the effects of COVID-19, and the passenger, the passenger traffic started to recede. The first half of March was really strong, spring break with a lot of the colleges and universities in our market. But that started to slow. And the last two weeks were really not good. And you can see it finished out at not such a great month. We do not have April data yet. The airline typically sends that sometime in about the second week of the following month. So we don't have data for April yet. I will tell you, it's not going to be, it's not going to be great. Traffic has really fallen off, not only here at SHD, but nationwide. Next, next page in the deck, please. This is just to kind of give you a little higher level view of passenger traffic. And you can see post recession, 2008, traffic was building. You can see the Frontier Service, which was the Orlando service for the winter of 2012, 2013. That service did really well. It was 140 seat airplane, three times a week each way to Orlando. And we filled 97 to 98% of the seats in the last three months that the service was here. They didn't return. It was seasonal service for the winter. They didn't return because Frontier was sold. And the new investment group that owned them decided they wanted to take the airport a completely different direction and not fly smaller markets like ours. But it wasn't that the service wasn't successful. So we continue efforts to try to secure that type of less than daily low fare service to Florida. Florida is our number one market, particularly Orlando, and it's no secret. We continue to meet with carriers that serve less than daily low fare Florida. And we feel like we're getting some traction on that. Then you can see the effects of the pilot shortage in 2014, 2015, which really led to some of the smaller regionals that we had at that time struggling in their operational performance, which had an adverse impact on passenger traffic. And then you can see the 2018, the first quarter, and then the switch to SkyWest and the fantastic results that we've seen with United and SkyWest. And based on how things were trending out of the gate for 2020, we were going to be in the 40,000 plus passengers for 2020. Next page, please. Just quickly, I want to touch on the airport's capital improvement program. You all support the airport. We appreciate that support. And we've been able to leverage your support for significant federal and state participation from the FAA and the Virginia Department of Aviation to make sure that we not only rehabilitate existing infrastructure, but that we continue to develop and evolve the facility to handle the needs that continue to grow at the airport. We recently completed an airport master plan. It was a very comprehensive project over a span of two years. It's required by the FAA and by the State Department of Aviation. It's our roadmap for development and guides us in programming our projects. It guides them in knowing how to program their funding for our projects. And we wrapped that up in late 2017. The next step in that was a required phase one environmental. Phase one is the projects in the first five years of the master plan. The projects we anticipate that we're going to undertake in the first five years coming out of the master plan. We had to do a comprehensive environmental assessment of all those projects contained in phase one. We have recently wrapped that up, actually last month. So we're now moving into those projects in phase one. The projects shown in blue are projects that funding has already been secured for, and those projects are underway. And the commission continues moving forward with those. Taxiway and apron construction in the north corporate hangar area, corporate hangar construction. Hangar construction is important. We currently house about 80 aircraft at the facility. We have a growing waiting list, so we have a need for additional hangar capacity. And that project, the funding has already been secured for it, and we're moving forward with that as the design on that as well. Fuel farm replacement, the existing fuel farm is about 30 years old, and it will be replaced with a much improved system that is much more environmentally sound and gives us some additional fuel capacity, Jet A and aviation gasoline. Future projects in the next few years, runway pavement rehabilitation, the runway was recently repaved in 2005. It will need it soon. That will be an expensive project because each time we repave the runway, the work has to be done between midnight and 6:00 AM so that we do not disrupt operations to the airport. Also, an expansion that general aviation apron, you saw the previous pictures about those busy days in corporate aircraft. We need a little more space to park those. Other pavement rehabilitations just due to time. And then some lighting rehabilitations on the airfield and some land acquisition that the FAA would like to see us undertake to protect our runway protection zones and the approach surfaces to the airport. Next page, please. This is the airport layout plan, and I don't have power by mouse. I was going to show this to you, but just to show you, I think it illustrates the comprehensive nature of the recent. nature of the recently completed master plan. Next page, listen. I've got a couple of slides just real quick to talk about the COVID-19 situation, how it's impacted SHD, what we've been doing, what United has been doing and our tenants at the airport. As I mentioned before, we've seen a noticeable decrease in traffic. It's in line with national trends. I recently just read that last week nationwide, the airlines saw somewhere between 3% and 5% of the passenger traffic that they saw for the same week last year. The airlines have experienced just tremendous decreases in traffic. And along with that has been a commensurate pull down in capacity and a reduction in number of flights nationwide. However, I will tell you, even though we've experienced a reduction in people traveling, both because they're not comfortable traveling in this environment and also because of some of the restrictions, the remaining traffic, both airline and on the corporate side, is largely the essential movement of critical personnel that are associated with supply chain, manufacturing, medical and military. A lot of the operations we see coming in and out are moving those critical personnel, moving maintenance technicians that are working to keep production lines going and food production, medical production. And we're seeing medical volunteers move out from the valley to, to hotspots, which United has been kind enough to fly those folks for free. And also some military movement. We also have the medevac helicopter base at the airport, which is, they're 24/7 basically as a flying trauma level resource. SHD has to maintain 24/7 operational readiness because of this and because of our operating certificate with the FAA and because we need to be there for the, for our users. So we've worked closely to make sure that we do that with SkyWest, with TSA, and certainly with the medevac helicopter folks that are also 24/7. Next page, please. Actions taken by the Airport Commission. We implemented our crisis management plans. We've developed and implemented business continuity strategies, again, to make sure that we are still there through this crisis and as we come out the other side. Things like making sure that our rotating shifts at the airport do not touch each other as they are overlap, so that if, if there is a situation that we can still maintain operational integrity and other things to make sure that we have business continuity and that we remain there and reliable. Also increased cleaning of the terminals. We've exceeded the CDC guidelines. SHD was already an exceptionally clean facility and our folks in housekeeping of facilities do a great job and they've taken that up another, another couple of steps recently. We've also continued our coordination with all of our airport tenants. We have about a dozen tenant businesses on the field, some of which are essential, some of which are not. So we've been busy coordinating with them on what kind of things should happen and making sure that they're taking action to protect everyone, follow the guidelines that are out there and, and be responsible. Also proactive fiscal policy, we've been hit from a revenue standpoint, as you might imagine, and I'm sure as the city has been. And so we've taken actions to eliminate discretionary spending, freezing any open positions, deferring our seasonal hiring that this time of the year we would normally undertake and reduced or eliminated part-time hours. Next page, please. Actions taken by United and SkyWest kind of are in two categories. One is efforts they're taking to slow or, or stop the spread. And some of those are increased efforts to support social distancing on flights, cleaning of their aircraft, and also they've offered very generous booking flexibility and allowed folks to change their flights without some of the customary change fees and difference in fare and that kind of thing. That's originally planned through the end of April. We look forward to be extended into May or June. Also along with this, United has cut globally their capacity by about 90%. American and Delta have done like much the same. And they've had, because of this, there's been a realignment of the hubs and far fewer flights at the hubs means there's far fewer banks at the hubs. So certainly there have been adjustment in our flight times to make sure we still meet the banks and provide that connectivity to our critical passengers. Through all these cuts, a lot of airports are seeing cuts of 70%, 80%. We've been fortunate, we've only lost one round trip per day that's been removed for the April, May schedule. It's largely because of our protections under the essential air service program. There may be reductions, additional reductions, but right now we're still at about 66 and two-thirds of our original schedule for May, April and May. And I think things will be evaluated going forward. The schedule beyond May, for now, United and SkyWest has left our frequency that existed in December in the system. They're hopeful that at some point we can get back to normal and so they continue to leave that out there. And another point I want to make about United and SkyWest, we knew this was a great thing, getting this airline in our community, and it's been proven through this crisis. The service has remained exceptionally reliable, even in cases where there were only a couple of passengers on a flight. There were critical passengers and United and SkyWest have continued to perform exceptionally. Every flight's running, they're running on time and they're just doing a great job for us, making sure that that critical link in and out of our community stays there and it's something that can be counted on and be reliable. And, and they run the flights, it doesn't matter how many people are on the flight, they run it. Next, next slide. So that brings me to any questions you might have. Hopefully I haven't taken up too much of your time. Again, we appreciate the support of the city. We are, our team has really stepped up at the airport to work through this current situation. And we're looking forward to one day working through the current crisis, coming out the other side. And we look forward to greeting our community and our visitors with the same enthusiasm and exceptional customer service that folks have come to expect from the airport. And we will be there to do that. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Council members, does anyone have a question? No, but we appreciate having the regional airport and the great work that you all do. Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I want to share with council, I didn't hear Mr. Campbell touch on this, but as the Airport Commission has been struggling with its budget adjustments for FY 2021, as council knows, we have been struggling as well here in the city. And I wanted to share with council members that we received word from Mr. Campbell earlier this week, that the commission would be looking to the city for level funding of its contribution to the Airport Commission for FY 2021. There had been an understanding among the Airport Commission member localities that there would be an increase in FY 2021 in the localities' contributions to the Airport Commission. And Mr. Campbell kindly let us all know earlier this week that the commission would forego that increased contribution and ask localities to fund at the FY 2020 level. And of course, we appreciate every instance where we can achieve some savings as we revise the, the budget that we've proposed to council. So I just wanted to share that with council and express my thanks to Mr. Campbell while he's with us this evening.
Yes, we, we do appreciate that. Any other, any other comments? Did Ms. Reagan have anything to say?
Mayor Dole, members of council, I'd just like to reiterate our appreciation for the city's support of the Airport Commission and happy that they're continuing to do their jobs and we're all, we're all in this together and we'll come out the other side together. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to item E, which is the consideration of an application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for a Virginia Industrial Revitalization Fund Grant for the Arcadia Project. Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. During your work session, you heard from Billy Vaughn, the city's Director of Economic Development, about a proposed project involving the Dixie Theater on Beverly Street in downtown Stanton. You also heard from two of the principals of the Arcadia Project, which is the name, but the name of the project as well as the name of the organization that is proposing to undertake the project. Pam and Tom Wagner joined you during your work sessions to share with you details of the proposed project. They are seeking city council's support in the way of an application by the city to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for an Industrial Revitalization Fund Grant. That grant program establishes to provide funding for the rehabilitation of vacant or distressed properties. And the grant being sought by the Arcadia Project for the Dixie Theater renovation is $600,000. The Wagners shared with you details of their fundraising efforts to date to support the project, which would transform the Dixie Theater into a cultural center, targeting the needs of underserved young adults, minority and youth groups. The Wagners shared with you further details of their application, which requires a one-to-one match of grant funds. They will satisfy that match entirely, that is, the Arcadia Project will. There's no funding commitment from the city that's required or requested in connection with the grant application. They are in the fundraising phase, presently, they are seeking to raise grants from private foundations in the amount of $600,000. Funds from private donors also in the amount of $600,000. And then a portion of their building acquisition debt settlement is also eligible to be used as matching funds. But all told, they are anticipating a fundraising effort on their part of approximately $1.5 million, well exceeding this $600,000 match that's required by the Department of Housing and Community Development. So you have before you on the agenda, a proposed resolution that would authorize the city to make an application to the Department of Housing and Community Development with the funds, if awarded, to be provided to the Arcadia Project in support of this effort. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Dole.
Ms. Mead.
I move to adopt the resolution approving an application by the City of Stanton, Virginia, to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for a grant under the department's Industrial Revitalization Fund Grant Program to fund the Arcadia Project as presented and authorize the city manager or his designee to complete any actions necessary in connection with such grant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Dole.
Dr. Harrington.
As I did in the work session discussion on this matter, I will be recusing myself from the vote since I'm a member of the Board of the Arcadia Project.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? I would just say, this is a, a great opportunity. It will be fun to see the old Dixie Theater being used again. So with that, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mayor Dole.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item F is consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Stanton and Augusta Healthcare Incorporated for the 340B Drug Pricing Program. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Beauregard will present this item.
Thank you.
Thank you. So earlier this evening at your work session, a couple of representatives from Augusta Health, Mark LaRosa and John Katsianis, presented this item, offered some details on it. Very broadly, the Augusta Health is seeking city's support for the 340B Drug Pricing Program, which is an outpatient drug pricing initiative. And the city's support is in the form of an MOU, which you have before you. And this program is a federal program, which makes outpatient drugs available to covered entities at significantly reduced prices. And their participation, Augusta Health's participation requires that Augusta Health contract with a local government, in this case, pursuant to which Augusta Health commits to provide those healthcare services to low-income individuals. And the attached memorandum of understanding between the city and Augusta Health is intended to fulfill that requirement. So I would recommend that council approve this memorandum of understanding in connection with Augusta Health's participation in the 340B Drug Pricing Program upon final review and approval of the city attorney, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Dole.
Dr. Curran.
I move that the proposed memorandum of understanding between the City of Stanton and Augusta Healthcare, Inc., related to the corporation's participation in the federal government's 340B Drug Pricing Program, be approved and the assistant city manager be authorized to execute and deliver the memorandum of understanding and other such documents as may be required in connection with the program, with such modifications and in final form as may be approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Dole.
Yes.
This is Councilwoman Oaks. I would just like to state that this is the 340B Drug Pricing Program. It's an excellent program that Augusta Health is undertaking and I commend Augusta Health for doing just this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mayor Dole.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have matters from the city manager, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three items to share with you briefly. First, I want to make the public aware, I've shared this with council previously, but, but for those members of the public who are listening, the Stanton Downtown Development Association on its website has been maintaining a listing of those businesses in the central business district which remain open and are providing services. And the executive director of SDDA, Greg Beam, has kindly agreed to include not only businesses in the central business district, but also businesses located elsewhere in the city. So members of the public who are looking to see who is operating in these current times can go to the SDDA website at www.stantandowntown.org and they will find a link there to the listing that is being maintained by Mr. Beam. I also want to remind everyone that we continue with our series of Stanton Responds videos. We've produced three of these videos, which provide an opportunity for us to express our appreciation to the public and to share with the public how we continue to provide programs and services. Thus far, Mayor Dole, Police Chief Jim Williams and I have appeared in those videos and I would anticipate by the end of the week, Billy Vaughn, our Economic Development and Community Development Director, will appear in a video. So those are on, accessible on the city's website, on the city's Facebook page and on YouTube. And finally, to piggyback on some comments made previously by Ms. Oaks, I believe she identified two different providers who are providing childcare for essential workers in the city. I'm at a point where I can share with council that we are working with a third provider, the Boys and Girls Club, which previously had a program at Booker T. Washington Community Center, which was closed with the onset of the public health emergency. We, we are now in discussions with them and I'm confident they'll come to fruition so that the Boys and Girls Club can additionally begin offering childcare services to essential workers in accordance with federal workers in accordance with federal guidelines at Booker T. Washington. And I would anticipate that those services would commence at the beginning of May. Thank you very much.
All right, thank, thank you. At this time, we would have matters from the public. If there's anyone else that wishes to communicate, you'd need to follow the instructions that we presented earlier and call in and have an opportunity to speak.
So, Madam Mayor, I don't see any callers that are in the queue, but we might wait a moment just to see whether anyone, anyone joins.
All right.
I do not see anyone in the queue.
All right, well, with no one in the queue wishing to speak and with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.